Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm guessing, because of this budget and because of others, things that the city's doing, we may be looking at another credit downgrade. That's a forecast out five, six months from now, but I'm telling you, we're gonna have a problem. And we're gonna have a problem because of the fact that we do have these issues here, and there are at least three members of this council that will not vote for a tax increase. I'm gonna tell you right now, because of the policies that were implemented here. And that means it's only two away from no with revenue. So balancing the structural deficiency that the City of Phoenix has and the way that these gimmicks have created this problem, because they've created the problem, this is no different than, it's a different scale than places like Detroit, but those gimmicks, those types of policies are what drove those cities into bankruptcy and into financial crisis. And then the lack of political will from the elected officials are what created even more of a problem. So you're going to have individuals saying, "No, we want you to fix it now." People like myself are telling you to fix that now. And others are gonna be saying, "Kick the can down the road a bit, and hopefully the economy takes it over and fixes it." At the end of the day, and we all know what politicians are like, they're not gonna be making some difficult decisions because they're afraid to. So it is what it is. The other part of it deals with, what is the plan of preserving our credit rating? I don't see this budget as doing that. I think this is gonna be more problematic than we think. So what is the overall plan to put the credit rating back into the radar screen as part of our budgeting process and everything else that we do?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, so the credit rating is always on our radar screen, and as I just say again, I think what's important is the message that you send to the rating agencies through your budget is whether you're able to address your expenses and your revenues equally to bring a budget into balance. And that's what I believe that this budget that I'm proposing does. I don't believe that there are gimmicks in this budget. I think it addresses the revenue side of the equation, it addresses the expense side of the equation, and we find responsible ways in which we have some one-time revenues that can help us. One of the important things is that you're able to demonstrate that you're replacing your equipment. And so I've read some things on Detroit, and one of the things that happens in Detroit is some excessive percent of their ambulances are not able to respond to fire calls.
No parts.
And no parts or whatever. And so we, by doing this, by replacing our equipment on a regular schedule, we are not falling into that trap where we have equipment that is able to respond. So I feel that this, there are lots of things that go into ratings that I don't control, but I do feel confident that the thing we do control, which is how we manage the budget, that we do have a good story to tell the rating agencies.
Well, I hope this story's a good one. I hope I'm wrong on that one, I really am. The question I've got in my final when dealing with it in the forecasted numbers for 2015, 16, I believe we also have some question of whether or not there should be some sort of property tax increase in 20, is it 2015, 16? Or is it 16, 17, that quarters, that 25 cent, or which is almost a 40% increase would be?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the property tax discussion from a couple of weeks ago really raised the issue of at what level there might need to be property tax raised in 15, 16, or 16, 17. I don't think any decision's been made by this council as to which year, and depending on, again, you gotta, we gotta go through a year of experience with property values and interest rates, but depending on what happens, there will be a choice for 15, 16, and a choice for 16, 17, and balancing that out is what'll happen next year. But that property tax is really about the secondary side, which is capital, not the primary side, which is this.
I totally get it, but our policy has been taking money from the secondary to pay for this. So the question I have, because there is a 25 cent, which is about a 40 or 60%, I forgot what it was, oh, I think it was like a 60% increase in that tax, which is pretty big. And I don't think the public's aware of that, but is that built in anywhere? Is maximizing the primary built in all across the board here? So are there revenues coming in from the secondary to pay for this, any, along the whole spectrum, or was that just left out of this? Because if it's left out, that's a big move.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, this, these revenue forecasts do assume that the primary property taxes maximized in each of those years.
Because we had that discussion, and I think the question was in 2015, 16, that that was not gonna be in place, if I remember correctly from the meeting. Am I, correct me if I'm wrong on that, Mario, or Ed, or someone.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio.
At some point we were gonna stop it.
That we were not gonna maximize the primary?
Yeah, there was going to be a point where we couldn't do that any longer, and I'm trying to figure out what year that was. Well, there was a point, because there had to be a, there had to be a projected increase somewhere. So it's either gonna be coming from raising taxes on the public, or you're gonna be taking it from that fund. You see what I'm saying? Somewhere in that gap, I'm just trying to figure out where it is in this, these forecasted numbers, that 20, that 60% increase is, where is it? Yeah?
Go ahead. Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, I believe you may be referring to the policy to float the secondary rate to where it would need to be, which may involve either a total rate increase or a shifting of the primary rate down to get that to where it needs to be, so the secondary rate can be higher. So it's a choice that the city council would have to make to do either one of those.
Thank you. That's where I'm getting it. Is that choice reflected anywhere up there on that screen?
These, in this five-year forecast, each of those years assumes the continued maximization of the primary in accordance with the law.
Okay.
So the one, the one other thing I would point out on that is...
And I do have a follow-up on that, 'cause that's important. Go ahead.
On the, on the total rate, obviously the total rate is staying at $1.82, but this year for 14, 15, the rate is shifting toward the secondary. So the secondary rate is going up from about, from 35 cents...
Forty-two.
To 46 cents.
Forty-six.
And the primary rate is coming down from $1.47 to $1.36. So that is one of the things that's happening this year for the first time in several years, but it is allowing that secondary to have a higher portion of that rate.
You're getting more revenue from properties. Valuations are going up, too. The question I've got, though, but I wanna go back to that. If the policy is maximizing the primary, which if I take from the report that was generated, if you continue on that policy, there has to be some sort of either rate decrease on the primary, or there has to be a tax increase, right? What I'm getting at is that if that's, that's where the rate, you know, increasing the primary is built into these numbers here. So that means this council, if it doesn't agree with those nu, I mean, if we hit a wall, the council will be forced to raising taxes on the public because they're either gonna take it from here, or they're gonna have to take it from a tax increase, is what you're saying.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the, as we do every year, again, this is a forecast, but as we do every year, the council will have a choice between, of where the resources go and how they want to allocate them. So I don't think this locks anybody into anything other than just, it's a knowledge of the future that we have decisions to make, and the council, as it does every year, will make those decisions based on the information at hand at that point.
But what I'm getting at is the decisions you've made already up there on the board are, from what I understand in the council report, not stable, because you can't maximize the primary to that level without some sort of increase somewhere else. The assumption, then, is that the council's gonna make a property tax increase, correct?
So Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, this isn't locking anybody into anything.
No, I know, but the assumptions...
This is a projection with assumptions, and if those assumptions change, then in the year in which those assumptions change, we'll deal with those through whatever means are necessary.
But that's what I'm getting at. Those assumptions now are assuming that this council, based, I'm trying to cover the structural, the structural deficit which I see here. Okay, maybe I see numbers differently. It's one of those things that I dream numbers, but, but I know Thel is laughing, it's just true. So what I'm trying to get at here is, based on these projections that we have here, the other alternative will now deal with, because of all the different things that the city does from different pockets, we'll be looking at a property tax increase somewhere, or a cutting of the bond again. I mean, those are the other alternatives. If they maintain this policy, that this, I wanna make sure the council knows what they're voting on, so when, if and when, which I believe it'll be a win, this council's gonna be forced with raising property taxes, they're gonna know that they made the decision to do this, and they're going in this wide, eyes wide open. Because if they vote for this this way, that's what they're doing to this future council.
Mr. City Manager, will you respond? I'm gonna go ahead to Councilman Williams next, please.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio...
I know it's uncomfortable, Mayor, to bring this up, but I'm telling everyone what's gonna happen here.
Councilman, you can, you can bring up any issue you want at any time, as you often do, but it's time to move on to Councilman Williams, 'cause many other council members have...
Well, I know, because I brought up, like I said, this is a difficult discussion, and Mayor, you know this is gonna create a property, you know it creates instability, and that's why.
Councilman, please, I'm gonna give the City Manager a chance to respond.
I am, and I, if I'm done with my questioning, I have a right to ask these questions, 'cause they're hard questions to ask, and the public deserves to know what's built into those things.
Thank you, Councilman. Please, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, what we don't know is what's gonna happen with property values, what's gonna happen with interest rates, or any of those things. Those will all factor in at the time that we're dealing with it. This is just a projection. Again, it does not lock us into anything, it just says, "Here's what we have to deal with." And as we've done since I've been with the city, every year we find a way to manage those things and deal with them. So I'm just not willing to say that this is locking the council into some decision two years from now...
I totally get that.
Because we don't know that.
Ed, I totally, 100% get that, and you're, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that I want this council, Mayor and council, to know exactly what they're gonna be voting on, because if they vote for this policy, then they can't come back a year later and say, "Oh, we have a crisis." They can't do that anymore, because now everybody's going in this eyes wide open, that they know exactly what's gonna happen. And again, this brings up the fact that there is a structural deficit here, that this council wants, Mayor and council wants to kick down the road. I'm saying we need to fix this right now, put the policies in place, maybe too late to do this before the end of May, but we certainly can start putting the plan together to solve it. And to, and if they vote for this, this is, I believe, is gonna create another credit downgrade, because they're, the credit agencies are a lot smarter than I am, and they're gonna look at these kinds of things. And they're gonna say, "What are the, what's really behind these numbers, and whether it's a continuation of a policy that's problematic?"
All right, to Councilman Williams, please.
Thanks for cutting me off, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanna thank Mario and Ed for working so hard and listening. I think this has been quite a unique time and period and circumstances. I've, also I've noticed a lot of things that I didn't think of before, and I think that we are still doing business the same old way. We have done some great cuts, we have found efficiencies, but have we really changed our method of operation? I don't think so. And I was thinking about, when it comes to policy decisions, you bring new decision, or new projects to us, or even for the bond committee, I don't ever recall costs attached. What's it gonna take, not only to build it, but to operate it? And I think that's something that should be considered from day one, if we're gonna proceed on implementing a new policy or putting something to a bond committee, because I think part of our situation is the fact that we had a very large capital project list. We built new libraries, parks, dog parks, and that all seems great, but we forget it takes staff and equipment to operate it. There are other costs involved, and I don't think that we've ever taken that into consideration as we've gone forward. I, I think it's very true, when I looked at the budget, if you recall, one of my questions is, I was looking at the police budget, and I said, "Why do we have all these officers assigned to these different programs? We have done, like the Great Program, for over 20 years at schools. Is it still important? Do we have any statistics that show that it works today like it worked 20 years ago? Times have changed, kids have changed, and if we have all these officers assigned..." But then I learned it was positions, not necessarily filled. So I began to question, what do the other programs have? We have systematically, in every department, I know we have, over the years, always had a philosophy that we wanna provide the lowest cost, closest to free to the community, everything we do. And when I was watching the news this weekend and saw $15 for eight weeks of swim lessons, I thought, "I wonder how much that costs us to provide eight weeks of swim lessons? Is that staff time? Does that include water, chemicals, electricity? Do we ever consider any of this stuff?" And I think it's time that we look at the overall structure. When we have events, I know that we have come up with projected costs, but it didn't include personnel costs. And for instance, I'd like to know how much the Super Bowl's gonna cost us. I wanna know from everybody who's working on planning it, all the way through to who all's cleaning it up, everything that's involved in preparing and hosting the Super Bowl. I think it's important that we recognize what it costs us to do some of these things, and whether we have an analysis, program by program, by department, by department. I think we have to have accountability, we have to show to the taxpayers that we are really looking to see what is still really relevant, what provides a real benefit to our community, and which ones we could let go of. I firmly believe, I'm gonna choke a little here, Sal's right on a lot of this. I, I think we have a structural problem, and I think we need to look at new ways of doing businesses, and it just can't be cutting costs, cutting salaries. We've got to find a better way to actually provide the operation, or not provide it. Or cost, or put a cost out to the taxpayer and say, "If you wanna participate in this program, this is what it costs." Because everybody in town, we talk about the other cities, and we're still by far the lowest, low, low, low cost in comparison to their programs and their services. Do we still need to provide all those? I think we really have to take a true look at that. We've been all, everybody for so many years, and times have changed, and I don't think we can do that. I'm very worried about the property tax, too. I think we have to learn how to switch that. I see bad things on the horizon if we don't change our ways, and I'm just very concerned about it, and I think this is something that we need to address in the future. I think it's been very clear, budget needs to start earlier, and definitely negotiations needs to start a heck of a lot earlier in the year. Timeframes on our calendars don't work. We've never been put in this position before. We, I hope we've learned a lesson, and we can take forward and make the appropriate changes. But I, I think this is a time of opportunity, and it would be a real shame if we didn't grasp that opportunity. We have a lot of brilliant people on staff, on council, and in the community that are more than willing to step up and help us do this, and I think it's time we really do a strong internal review of what we're doing, providing, and how much this actually costs us to do this. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm voting against this budget, and it's frankly, it's not a hard decision. We're cutting the pay of police and fire, which is our first line of defense. Councilman DeCecio talked about our core functions. I can't think of anything more important than police and fire, so the fact that that's one of the things on the chopping block, but the salaries, at least on the chopping block, I think is a mistake. We didn't need to be in this situation. I think we got here by some mismanagement and poor decision-making. You know, we're also raising taxes at a time when I don't think that's necessary or needed, certainly increasing fees and everything else that was on that list. Quite a bit of it I found objectionable, so I can't support that either. There was a conversation about the bond rating. Probably the best thing we could do to show the bond agency, rating agencies that were stable, is to live within our means, and not have to cut salaries, and not have to be cutting expenses, or doing this, or doing that, just live within our means, which easily could've been done, as Councilman DeCecio talked about. We actually are taking in more money than we were last year. I understand about the pension costs and so forth, but I still think this was a hill we should've been able to climb without some of the methods that are being used in this budget. Just a specific example, and it's nothing against the person who was in that position, or the position, or against volunteers, or anything else, so I don't want anything to be misinterpreted. But you said we've had the volunteer coordinator position for three years? Is that right? Three years. So it's been there for three years, but now we're sort of determining we can't survive without it. I would beg to submit that, that we would have a lot harder time getting by without police officers and firefighters, as well as streets, sanitation, and frankly, libraries. I see those as our really core functions. You know, maybe we should revisit some of the things we're doing. I thought Laurie Roberts had an excellent article on Monday highlighting some of the things we're doing that absolutely fall outside the parameters of anything that could be considered any city's core mission. And Dustin Gardner and Amy Wang have talked about this in Republic as well. So a lot of the examples are out there about things that we do. Councilman DeCecio mentioned a few of them, so there's no reason for me to rehash the individual items, that I question, how did this even get in here? It's just, it's a little bit frustrating. One thing I wanted to ask about specifically is on page five of your presentation, the overtime additional police OT for the 2015 Super Bowl. I think we're kicking in a million dollars in this budget for the overtime, and it says at the bottom with an asterisk, "Expected to be offset by additional sales tax revenue due to the Super Bowl." Don't you include, I mean, isn't that part of your revenue projections for the year? So isn't that already accounted for? It's not extra revenue, it's already built into your projections. Am I right or wrong about that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the expected additional revenue is, is part of the projection for 14, 15. Expected additional revenue that come, would come from the extra activity from the Super Bowl. So activities downtown, also state sales tax will be boosted a little bit, and we'll see the state shared piece of that also increase. The point here was just to show, there is an additional amount of overtime required on the expense side, but we are also anticipating an increase in general fund revenue on the revenue side.
But we'll never really know specifically what was attributed to the Super Bowl. I mean, we might see an uptick in, I guess the game is in early February, so late January, early February. But I was just concerned when I saw that, I hope we're not double counting somewhere. But it sounds like maybe you're just making the point that this is sort of an investment. To that end, the legislature had a bill, I think, for $2 million for, to help Glendale, because they can't pay their bills, because they've made some decisions that might be considered questionable in retrospect, perhaps prospectively as well, but certainly in retrospect now. So are we anticipating that we're gonna be asked to foot more of this bill? Or was this $2 million just extra insecurity? I mean, does anybody have any idea what's gonna happen next?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, are you asking if we're gonna be asked to foot Glendale's bill?
Well, I think that's what they asked the state to do, and the state said no. So we want, obviously, to have a secure Super Bowl. I'm just saying, since we are highlighting this as we're gonna get this extra revenue, if we're gonna turn right around and spend it, I'm not necessarily advocating that, I'm just wondering, has anybody made that request? I've been a little surprised that it's been fairly quiet, given that it was a $2 million request for security. It's been a week or two weeks since the thing failed, and I haven't heard anything about it. And a big part of this responsibility is ours, we're already, we're already talking about taking out a million of it.
I think at the, at the appropriate time, we should have public safety come before this council and talk a little bit about this. Obviously, some of it'll be homeland security-related items, but to the extent they can talk about it, we should. I'm expecting that City of Phoenix will be providing support on Game Day in Glendale to support City of Glendale with their public safety necessities for a game of the magnitude of the Super Bowl, which is what we did last time the Super Bowl was here. And I think our team is expecting that our responsibilities to help them will be similar to what was done the last time. If Glendale has additional needs for public safety support because of their budget situations, obviously, staff will be presenting that to us. But I think the number that was included accounts for the additional Super Bowl expenses associated with security in downtown Phoenix because of all the activities, and the fact that we're gonna have City of Phoenix officers, assuming that we have the same security situation last time, stationed out at City of Glendale on Game Day. Is that accurate?
Mayor, that's my understanding, yes.
So...
You have a different approach?
Well, I just, no, and I'm not, it wasn't a criticism or anything else, I just wondered if that 1 million was gonna become 3. Obviously, we're running a pretty fairly tight budget high-wire act with this. $2 million is a fair chunk of some of the tax increase that we saw and so forth. It's almost, you know, if we were asked to foot that bill, it's almost half of the cut that, I think the police cut was $4.6 million in salary, didn't we establish that last week? So it's almost half of that. I just wanna make sure there's no additional surprise bill coming down the line, and it sounds like, I guess there's not.
Not that we are aware of.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, because it was on here, so delineated.
The issue would come up if the City of Glendale is put in a situation where they have to ask not only Phoenix, but the other valley cities for additional help above and beyond what was done last time, but obviously, I think our management would bring that to us in advance to, if there was a specific request. In the meantime, law enforcement agencies from around the valley are already working closely together in preparations for the security and homeland security issues associated with not only the Game Day, but all the other associated events, most of which will be occurring in downtown Phoenix next year.
I guess, since we're talking about our budget, I was just trying to, that was one where I saw, you know, I bet we could get hit up for another million or two sometime in the next six months, that's something we should know as this is going forward. It sounds like right now, there's an absence of information about this. I thought the $2 million in the bill at the legislature was because Glendale couldn't meet their obligation, so they were asking the state to foot it. Now maybe they can go back and scrape together the $2 million, I don't know. But I just, again, I just wanna make sure, 'cause it's a million here, a million there, and it's real money, so.
Excellent.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's clear. And I don't think, I mean, I'm guessing this council would not be entertained a request for actual dollar payment to the City of Glendale, but if we could provide manpower and services, utilizing, since we have to have the best trained officers in the valley, obviously the best training when it comes to the homeland security, if we could provide those additional support services to make sure the game is as safe as possible, I'm assuming that this council would be fully in support of providing our officers to make sure that Game Day is as, as safe as possible. City Manager? Okay, do you have anything else?
No.
Other comments? Councilman Nowakowski?
Mayor, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. And on the budget, this is all assuming if all the unions come together and they actually give up a 1.6%, right? So if it doesn't, we have this attachment, which is attachment B and C, but I also like you to look at other, other possibilities. I agree with some of my colleagues when we talk about vacant positions, that we really need to look at that timeline. How long have these positions been vacant? And allow us to evaluate those and see if there's a need or not. And if there is a need, then absolutely we should fill them, but if they've been vacant for three to four years, then we really need to look at that. The other thing is the free busing services that we provide. I like to see how much it's actually costing us per year, the whole circulators that we have out there during these hard times, doing free bus service, maybe it's not a good idea, so I like to look at that. I like to look at, it was mentioned last week, the whole towing fees, and also the DUIs and stuff like that, and the jail fees, if that's even possible. I think there was an officer that talked about the possibility of charging so much with, for jail fees and getting a percentage of that, or something like that. And then the whole, I like to really revisit that property tax. I think when we're forecasting, and if in our forecasting, we got ourselves in a lot of trouble in the past, and if there is the property tax in that forecast, I think we should know that, and we should be ready and prepared for an increase or decrease or whatever, but I think, I like to understand the whole property tax, and if it is a part of that forecasting that you have there, then I like to figure out what it is and what I'm voting on. The other thing is, we talked about, and there's a good article from Dustin, talking about equality budgets for our council. I think that we talk about that 6%, that might be a way for us to cut that 6% in making sure that we all have budgets. I think what's so important about that is that we have to run our own offices, and we don't have an equal budget throughout all the council offices. So if you have to make those hard decisions, just like any director in any department has to make those cuts, I think we need to do the same thing. We need to be put in the hot seat and make those hard decisions, so we understand where our employees are coming from when they have to make those hard decisions, those hard cuts. The other thing is, and the bottom line is that, we need to run this like a business. We need to have some type of a, we need to manage by results. If we have a budget, we should have monthly reviews of the budget. If people are going very south on their budget, we need to make sure why, and we need to bring them back. If it's overtime, then we need to do something with managing overtime. If it's just spending excess money that we don't have, then we need to live within our means, like the Vice Mayor says. So I think we really need to look at ways, if it's going through the subcommittees, where we actually look at the different budgets and we manage it through the subcommittees, or there has to be some types of benchmarks that people agree to, and there needs to be some type of accountability. Forecasting is great, but if there's no accountability to those forecasts, then it's, then we're in the situation we're in right now. For me to be a council member and to oversee this budget and to vote on this budget, I need to have a better grip and understanding of the budget and where, where the problems are. So with that, I'd like to really have you all come up with a plan on how we manage by results, and I think it has to be on a monthly basis, so we get a full grip of what's going on throughout, throughout the City of Phoenix.
Thank you very much, Councilman. My understa, on the issue of people's paying for their own jail costs, my understanding is that the law does allow for a court to assess the full cost of someone's incarceration fees to that person, but judges are able to make a determination based on the person's but judges are able to make a determination based on the person's ability to pay, that they have to provide financial information. And so, we don't want to waste everyone's time trying to force the city to chase down money or the courts to chase down money that doesn't exist. But I didn't want there to be a mischaracterization relative to that. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, that is my understanding, that the judge ultimately has the authority to impose jail costs at whatever level is acceptable based on the financial situation, yes.
We could ask, we could certainly send a letter asking that, you know, they be as tough as possible with that. But I think ultimately, we can't tell a judge how much to assess relative to the incarceration cost. That's a court-assessed amount, and we can only recover what the court will assess and is recoverable.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Other members of the council, Councilwoman?
I was looking at our lobbying numbers. We spent $1.4 million on lobbying and got $117 million in returns and grants from other agencies. And if you look at the private sector, that's a pretty good investment. People in the venture capital world are celebrating 10x returns, whereas we are getting more and more dividends. And if I think about what are the greatest impediments to economic development in my district that I think the city can be involved in, so many of them are things where lobbying, government relations are central. So, I'm thinking of the 202 freeway. I can't tell you how often I meet with business owners who say, "We will invest as soon as you build the freeway." And we do need to push along some of our partners and other government agencies to make sure that happens. I think of the extension of light rail down to South Phoenix. That would bring $450 million in new infrastructure spending to our community. And it's something that's already delivered billions in returns elsewhere, so it could really push along. So, for me, I think we need to be, we can't be short-sighted. If we have investments that will pay dividends, we really need to make those investments and not sacrifice short-term cuts for things that really do make a difference for our constituents. And these are difficult decisions, but I think things like eliminating all vacant positions is an easy way out, and we really do need to look at those positions and see what they mean for our community. I have personally benefited a great deal from the volunteer coordinator and worked with that person in the position to bring in volunteers to do a variety of things the city used to do, including cleaning up South Mountain Park. We, at this policy committee meeting, welcomed AmeriCorps volunteers who came in because of that partnership with the person in the volunteer coordinator. And so, I do feel like I have enough information on those vacant positions. A lot of the vacant positions were detailed in the first draft, the trial city manager's budget, and that gave me a very good sense of what they were. But just to say we don't want vacant positions is an easy way out, and we really do need to say, do we want to have volunteers in there cleaning up our parks? Because otherwise, I heard very loudly from our constituents, they already think we're not doing enough there. Repeatedly, at my budget hearings, people complained about some of the way our city is beginning to look. I heard a lot of frustration with doing parks maintenance based on complaints. People don't want to have to complain to get their streets cleaned up. And I have a sense that in terms of my district, we don't have a lot of people who has complained as much. And so, appreciate the Parks Department working with me to address those issues. But it does seem we're using a lot of metrics in this budget that are, well, first off, that don't always get fair share to our community, but also that eliminating those vacant positions would make even worse. So, I have very significant concerns about those, that particular item. In terms of employee compensation, it was good news. It appears that if you count pension compensation, employee compensation per employee across the board is going up. We are spending more per employee than we were in the past. So, that is news that we are investing in our employees. And in terms of looking at the incentives we're giving our employees to help us with our bond rating, I think that the provision in the MOUs we do have that says, "If we have $10 million in general fund revenue, we'll look again at employee compensation," is a powerful incentive that aligns the city's needs with employee incentives. That they say if they can go out and find savings for us, they might share in that benefits. And so, while it's not directly the bond rating, that is a metric that I think maybe makes sense to more employees than saying bond ratings. I imagine that they're not reading rating agencies' guidances on a regular basis, but dollar savings is something that's very meaningful for all employees. And we had great suggestions at our last city council meeting, which I'd love to follow up with, including things like how many hours a day we use or a year we use cranes. So, we have a list that we found in District 8 to be very promising. And I know some of the other council people found many of those suggestions worthy of follow-up. I also am looking for follow-up for some of the items that I had mentioned at the last meeting in terms of how much we're spending on large events. I don't see that in the packet of follow-up items that came to some of my colleagues, but was reminded of it when Councilman Waring mentioned the cost for the Super Bowl. We do have many ongoing events, and it would just be good to understand those. Because in my mind, the Super Bowl has even more benefits in terms of economic development. We did have some high-profile locates after the last Super Bowl, but we have a lot of ongoing expenses, and we ought to understand overall the fair share. If we are looking for more sources of income, I also am hearing a lot from my constituents that we need to fight blight, and they're frustrated that they'll have houses which have been foreclosed on or vacant or whatever, and we put liens on there, and then we send other follow-up letters, and they feel nothing happens. And so, perhaps if we can look at whether there's revenue from those sources and revenue that moves us forward on a public policy goal that helps make our community cleaner. So, that to me is much better policy than revenue that is just reducing costs or making things more expensive that we want people to do, like buying healthy food. So, I hope that we'll look creatively at what incentives we're putting forward and try to solve bigger-picture problems in addition to solving our very serious budget problems. And then I wanted to ask, I've heard from a lot of folks in the downtown area an interest in more information about parking fees and what will be the process for determining those fees and how stakeholders would be involved.
Do you have an answer on that, the issue of potential revenue from smart metering on our parking meters downtown?
Mayor, Councilman Gallego, yes. The Street Transportation Department is charged with working with the downtown community, including the Downtown Partnership and others, for an outreach program between now and the end of this month. And so, I'll make sure that they get a report in the packet to everybody about what that program is going to be.
Because it is something that does seem promising to me. I think that getting more traffic circulating through downtown is very positive and could have economic development benefits. But you could also do it in a way that could create new problems. And I would be very interested in what stakeholders see as potential problems and benefits. So, the sooner the council can get that information, then the better it will be for me as a policymaker to make sound decisions there. Thank you.
Thank you.
We learned last time we went through this that there is not unanimity of opinion on the downtown businesses on parking and parking revenue issues. But it's good to get as much input as possible. I did want to add, too, we've got a Tiger grant in that would very much benefit this whole city, but particularly District 8 in terms of better connectivity, walking and biking, particularly the Ed Pesto Transit Center. And so, we're going to need you personally, as well as our lobbying team, to maximize our success of getting that very, very important and lucrative Tiger grant. We have not gotten one in a while, and it's time that we, that Phoenix gets one of those Tiger grants.
And that actually reminds me of an easy question. But as one of the people who helped create the Bicycle Subcommittee at the City of Phoenix, I heard a lot from the bicycle community in the budget process. Do we have any good news for them?
I think the significant part of our bicycle program is coming through the street CIP as opposed to the operating budget. So, what the operating budget has from this year continues, but the investment would come through the capital improvement program of the Street Transportation Department.
But we might have some good news on the HERF side, which I guess is a separate process, but.
Not everyone speaks transportation speaks. So, I want, Mr. City Manager, why don't you talk about HERF and what happened with HERF at the legislature and how that might benefit biking in Phoenix?
Thank you, Mayor. The legislature and Governor Brewer did return some HERF, Arizona Highway User Revenue Funds. We call it HERF, which is really the gas tax. Increase share in Phoenix's increase is about $2.7 million, which is for street capital projects. And so, that will be returning through the street transportation capital process, and will be discussed with the council as they're programming that.
I just want people to know that we did hear them and that we are looking to creatively find solutions with very limited resources.
By the way, it's not enough. It's still not back to where it originally was. It was swept, and I know there were some attempts to get the full amount. But I do want to thank Tom Remus and his team for working hard to make sure that Phoenix at least got our fair share, and we can use those resources to, among many things, but part of it is to improve bikability in our city on the capital side.
Further evidence that lobbying is important to our city's health.
Councilman Valenzuela?
Yeah, thanks. This is, it's been a good process so far. It's been very transparent. I want to thank Ed Zirker, Mario Panigawa, and of course, everyone on our city staff. We've had several budget hearings, obviously. I've attended four or five with five of my colleagues. And Councilmember Gates, Nowakowski, Pastor, Councilwoman Williams, and the mayor on a couple of occasions. And not the others, only because our districts, it didn't work out that way. But certainly, we had these budget hearings throughout the entire city. And, you know, one of the things that I mentioned at the beginning of each budget hearing is that the proposed budget is just that. You know, city manager has to start someplace. Then, you know, it's on the public and all of us to help shape and mold it, and whatever's going to be adopted is going to look a little different than what was being proposed. And that is just evidence that this is a public process. Public input, I've said this a million times, is not a box, it simply gets checked. We should be governing based on public input. So, it's very, very important to, you know, put out all the information, which I think everyone is saying. I think everyone agrees, we need all the information. We hear words like transparency, followed up with half the information. We need everything. And one of the things I just want to mention, I'm glad Councilwoman Gallego mentioned this on the government relations. The expenditures are $1.4 million with a return of 100, more than $117 million, including more than $77 million in federal funding, more than $35 million in state funding, and the list goes on and on. Some of the big wins just in the fiscal year 2012, '13 year is the COPS grants, SAFER grants, UAWI grants. Those are all public safety grants and other funding. For example, you know, funding for Human Services, Head Start, funding for elderly and low-income energy assistance, housing, community development block grants, and the list goes on and on. And so, we want to be, you know, I think everything should be looked at, absolutely. We should always be looking to be more efficient. But let's be careful here that we are not foregoing millions of dollars in return for this city that is facing a deficit, by the way. You know, doing that for the sake of saving a few thousand dollars in travel or advocating, lobbying, whatever you'd like to call it. The same can be said about the city. I do agree that we should be doing this, to get this governing body, everyone on this governing body should be doing that. I've traveled back to DC several times. I plan on continuing those trips to help bring back those funding opportunities, including the Tiger grant. And I do agree that everyone on this governing body should be advocating on behalf of this city, whether it be at the state or, of course, at the federal level. We obviously have some challenges ahead of us as we face this deficit and contract negotiations have gone on for several months. And for that, again, I want to, you know, thank our city employees, all of those representatives leading the labor organizations. And of course, you know, Ed, you know, you picked up this opportunity to be our, you know, this responsibility to be our city manager at just the perfect time, I think. And you and your entire team, you know, you all deserve some accolades here. I know we're not finished. A lot more work has to be done, but I think we're moving in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And then I think the Vice Mayor was a little offended you didn't mention his name.
You're having all these fun budget meetings with these other guys, and all I get is... So... No, but I go, we got the mayor, but if you would like to come on May 13th, or if you want to come, happy traffic, you can come up to 2214.
Right. As I, maybe I will take you, as I mentioned, what we tried to do is, you know, we have these joint budget hearings. So, District 3 and 5 are pretty close together, 7 and 5, 7 and 4, 7, or I'm sorry, 5 and 4, and so on and so forth. Yeah, no, but I just might have to take the special trip out to, to count Vice Mayor Waring's District 2. We'll see how that goes.
All right. Now, I think we'll be able to take a bigger whack at this thing on the 20th when we have our final budget hearing and vote by the council. But I think this revised proposed budget is a step, a significant step in the right direction. The original budget that was proposed wasn't acceptable to me. It wasn't acceptable, I think, to probably every member of this council. And for you, Mr. City Manager, to really listen to the, I guess, 1,700 people or so that made comments, heard how important the services that unfortunately had to be proposed to be cut were, senior centers, swimming pools, the youth centers, how critical it was that those remain open. And under the revised budget, they will remain open. We have some tough issues to deal with, and this council, I think, is ready to deal with those very difficult issues, but will do so in a balanced way. I think this revised proposed budget is a significant, significant step in the right direction. I just want to say thank you, Mr. City Manager, for attending all those hearings and actually listening to what the people of Phoenix had to say. So, with that, that's the only item on today's, substantive items on today's agenda. We'll be back tomorrow for our formal city council meeting, and then the 20th is when our final vote will be on this budget. Thanks, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.